Responders. And Lord, we just come to you with a praise. No matter how it might seem, Lord, we still tell you thank you. And we praise you for all that you're doing in our city. And how it will be said to be a great city. Great leaders, great decisions. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor McKee. Pledge allegiance.
Will we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor McKee. This is a roll call for tonight's meeting. The Honorable Catherine F. Rowell, District One. The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Here.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four. The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five. The Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six. And the Honorable Linda Bakira Pritchett, District Seven.
Present.
And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Khalid. Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Good afternoon. Thank you everyone for coming out. Welcome back to Southwest Art Center. We are back here having our council meetings live and in person. It is good to be back. Before I go any further, I think that I need to wish a happy Founder's Day to Dr. Rowell, Councilwoman Gums, and the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. So happy Founder's Day. We are going to be on second Tuesdays in person at Welcome All at 4255 Woolley Road. And then here on fourth Tuesdays through May, we're going to take a June recess, but we'll be here at the Southwest Art Center. I do want to talk about a couple of things that we have going on. You might have heard as you came in in the lobby, and if you haven't in intermission, you'll hear him playing again, Mr. Byron Henry Rose, Grammy Award winner performer with Eric Clapton and many, many other folks that came to play for us today. Also, I'm going to read this because I will not remember everything, but also joining us in the, if you get a chance either now, anytime during the meeting or during intermission, we have a work by Ben Stellmacher, "The Weight of My Faith", which is in our gallery just out these doors here. It will be at our gallery now through February 25th. All right, we have an exciting meeting tonight. We have a thousand-page agenda, lots of important things to discuss. I see some folks here from Wallace Road, mostly important. Most importantly, we are going to be answering all of your questions about sanitation, so have those ready. But before we begin, I do want to take another moment. Thank you Pastor McKee for your prayers. But I would ask that we take a moment of silence for Mr. McQuavious Blanchard, who was shot in the head last Wednesday at Camelot Condominiums and is currently in Grady's ICU right now. Ms. Blanchard is with us. Thank you so much for joining us today. But if we could just take a moment of silence for her and her family. Our thoughts and prayers, thoughts and prayers of the entire city are with you and your family at this time. And with that, Mr. Clerk, you can sound the next item.
The next item is approval of the City Council meeting minutes. Request Council approval of City Council regular meeting minutes from December 13, 2022. Approval of the City Council work session minutes from December 13, 2022, and January 10, 2023. Request Council approval of alcohol zoning public hearing minutes from December 13, 2022, and January 10, 2023. And the City Council special call meeting minutes from December 19, 2022.
I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve. I move that we approve City Council minutes.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's roll call vote. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item is adoption of the council agenda. Would like to let the mayor and council know that the city manager notified me before the meeting that upon consultation with the city attorney, the item 29, which is request council approval to confirm a special event application for Mayor Khalid, is being removed from the agenda per the advice of the city attorney.
Did you want to say, Mr. City Attorney? Would you want to elaborate on that?
Actually, there just had to be some information verified through the city manager that it met our resolution. And that's the basis of it being removed.
So we don't need to vote on the item?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Question?
Councilwoman Willis.
Mrs. Sally Jones, do you mind explaining why there was a special permit submitted? And it's my understanding, per Chief Meadows, that security is required and security has not been hired. So is there a reason why we don't, as a city council, need to approve for the record?
So in consultation with the city attorney, he had asked me to determine whether or not any of the administrative staff in the mayor's office was involved with planning this event. And from the investigation, what we've discovered in our office is that all of the planning is pretty much being done through Mayor Khalid himself. And so therefore, it falls under the excluded events, which under Resolution 219-052. Also, from my understanding, and Mayor Khalid can correct me if I'm wrong, nothing will be paid out of his operating budget concerning the event that he has planned. And then I also want to make sure that the council is aware, based upon this particular resolution, again, 2019-052, that because it is being considered a city event and does not require council approval, that the mayor can seek the assistance of our police department. So therefore, Chief Meadows, his staff, will need to do the security plan for the event.
Thank you.
All right. If it pleases the council, I do think, I understand that we did get a new process from our external affairs person, Ms. Howell. If we have time, it's at the end of the agenda. If we have time and council is so inclined, could we use that time to just talk about the permit process? Or would you rather we hold that to a work session?
Rather we hold it to a work session because it is in the very early, preliminary stages.
And Chief, would it be possible, because this is the conversation about gun violence? So is it possible that the city can get involved and participate in the gun buyback program as well? Since this is about gun violence and we're trying to get guns off the street, is that possible?
I would need to get with Chief Meadows because I don't know what the details of that type of process would be. And this proposed event is supposed to be on Thursday night. So again, I would need to get with him to determine whether or not we would need to be able to do that. But based upon my knowledge of the activities that are going to be going on, it's my understanding there is going to be job opportunities available for youth. I'm not sure if that component would work with the event, but again, I need to consult with my expert in that area.
Mr. Chair, are these events that you have on the calendar, is this would be an event for all of those events? Or those are the open dates for this event to take place? I know one was on Thursday, but then there was more on the calendar for Southwest Art Center.
And so we can definitely talk offline about gun buybacks and other programs. Every town hall will have a different focus, so it might not necessarily be youth violence in June.
Good deal. All right, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Sebastian.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies for my tardiness. Apparently, being a councilperson does not prevent your heat from breaking. So I was running a few minutes late. Mr. Mayor, by way of changes to the agenda, I've had conversations with city staff. I'd like to remove item 22, that contract for purchase of equipment for City Grove Park. The current thing does not appear to align with the overall master development plans for City Grove Park. So we just want to remove that from the agenda until further notice.
All right. Well, we can probably take all of these together. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised. But before we move on, I just want to be clear, Madam City Manager and Madam Attorney. So the event is clear to move forward without this vote?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Sebastian, it has one more change.
I do want to move the item to appoint the mayor pro temp from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, please. I have some additions.
All right.
And also to...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor Pro Temp.
Madam Jones, it's Attorney Hyman. I wanted to ask, would it be feasible to put the court lease as an agenda item? Or should that be an executive session?
I would address that in the executive session.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other changes, additions, subtractions? Edits, amendments? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Mr., any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, this is a motion to approve the agenda as amended, removing item 22, item 29, removing the mayor pro temp resolution to the regular meeting agenda for a vote. Roll call vote. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item is a proclamation presentation. It's a proclamation recognizing Courtney Bear Seals. And this is sponsored by Mayor Pro Temp Reeves.
Where are you? There you are, sir. Come on down, come on up. Bring your whole crew with you. We're going to meet you out here on stage.
Thank you all to my colleagues and to Mr. Seals, Bear Strong, and family. Met this young man a couple of years ago. We started building a rapport and for his work that he has done in the community. He saw a need, an essential need for youth, and particularly kids in general. And he got to work and he started doing, collecting items of essential items. I'll let him tell you more about it. But I just wanted to recognize him. As I only knew him for the work he was doing in the community. But as I went to an event he had to sponsor this, I said, apparently you're a big deal. And, but hey, but however, it doesn't, what he does outside of there is what he does here for the community and goes in the trenches and do the work that's necessary, particularly for our youth. And I just wanted to recognize him here. And I'm going to read this to you, Mr. Seals, and to the Bear Strong family. Whereas Mr. Courtney Seals, a College Park native and entertainment industry veteran, has pivoted in an effort to expand his impact, has founded Bear Strong Inc., a nonprofit organization that assists with creating change in marginalized communities. And whereas Bear Strong Inc. is committed to fully addressing socio-cultural factors impacting the social and emotional development of minority youth, the organization is also committed to social change, gleaming on its contribution to areas that are often overlooked or forgotten about. And whereas, under the direction of Mr. Seals, Bear Strong Inc. has initiated and implemented the Kids Are Essential hygiene drive to support children and families in South Fulton communities. Seals with an accordant understanding that individuals and groups whose physiological distress is often overlooked identify a niche opportunity to help make a positive cultural shift. Beyond their health promotion functions, good personal hygiene habits help children present an attractive appearance to the world, which in turn influences how they are perceived and treated by others. While many organizations are often collecting toys for children during the holidays, Bear Strong Inc. hosts a hygiene drive. And whereas childhood adversity is a major issue in public health, Seals and his organization are committed to renaming and remaining dedicated and integrated services and building systems that promote positive post-secondary and economic outcomes for young people while pursuing public-private partnerships that leverage outside resources to further promote positive outcomes for the youth. Hygiene behaviors improve children's appearance and social acceptability and thus help to enhance their self-esteem. And whereas Bear Strong, whose tagline is, "Despite the challenges, we refuse to waver", has shown a profound commitment to change within the city of South Fulton community. Mr. Courtney Seals, an astute businessman, has added servant of his people to his diversified portfolio and strategic alliances. And the South Fulton community is exceptionally proud to call him one of their own. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council recognizes Courtney Seals for his dedication and commitment to our youth and the community at large. Commends Mr. Seals for the impact he has made in so many lives and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 24, 2023, as Courtney Bear Seals Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton, Georgia.
Thank you so much, Councilman Reeves. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, my esteemed colleagues. Yeah, wrong word. But I want to say thank you first and foremost to my wife, Tina. Thank you for your continued support. My sister, my family, and the entire city of South Fulton, formerly College Park. I'm from Pine Tree off Flatsho's Road, and I grew up there. And College Park is, means everything to me. Now the city of South Fulton. So we're going to continue to do our best, put forth our best effort to help children in need. It's our purpose. It's ingrained in our heart because our mother, Diane Willis, may she rest in peace, was that kind of mother. Caring, giving, sharing, and teaching. And this, we accept this in honor of her. Thank you.
Could we give this man one more round of applause? It's not every council meeting. We have two young black men who are coming back to their community and giving to their community. We don't tell, I see a lot of cameras here today. We don't tell that story enough. Joe is going to be up a little while later. But I remember as a councilman, when our city was just being formed, we got a call that someone was giving away toys at Grown Folks Cafe. We didn't know anything about it. So this man got out and just started doing the work. Before we could even figure out who you should call to ask for permission for a permit, you were doing the work. So thank you so much for the work that you've done. No, not, not a problem at all. We didn't even have our office set up yet. But you, you were set up to do the work in our community. And I hope that this encourages other people in our community to get involved. You don't have to wait for somebody to ask you or for someone to build an organization. If you see something that needs doing, you know, give us a call in the city first. But just jump right in and do it. Thank you so much.
And thank you to the chief as well. I appreciate all your help. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And look out for Kids Are Essential establishment in some of the communities where they are underserved. So this is going to be something that's going to be all year. So we're expanding the brand. Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Clerk, you can go ahead and sound the next item.
The next item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Mr. Mayor and council, we submitted written comments and emails to the mayor and council previously today. But for tonight, we have eight people who submitted cards to sign up to make public comment tonight. And we have two people who are wishing to make comment via Zoom. So before calling, I would like to state tonight's public comment rules for the general audience. So South Fulton believes that any member of the general public should be afforded the opportunity to address the mayor and city council, provided that designated rules are followed by the speaker. Any member of the public who wishes to address the mayor and council and/or offer public comment on items when the mayor and city council's jurisdiction may do so during the public comment period of the meeting. However, no formal action will be taken on matters that are not a part of the posted agenda. Members of the general public wishing to make public comments at tonight's council meeting must be residents of the city of South Fulton. Except for county, state, federal, and elected officials should be allowed to speak regardless of city of residence. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker. A bell will signal the end of each speaker's time. In consideration of other persons who are registered to speak, speakers shall conclude their comments promptly upon the bell sounding. Speakers who do not properly conclude their comments should have the microphone disabled. Public comments shall be limited to only those items appearing on the current city council meeting agenda. Comments on issues or topics not appearing on the current city council meeting agenda should not be allowed. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors should have their microphone disabled. Each speaker must complete and submit a request to speak form in its entirety prior to the beginning of the meeting. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors should have their microphone disabled. Speakers should not be allowed to make remarks that have been legally recognized not to be, excuse me, protected speech, comments while addressing the council. Anyone who demonstrates these behaviors should have their microphone disabled. Speakers may not use public comments to campaign for political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates for the purposes of limiting political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. With those stated rules, we will start with the comments that were submitted via email first. As I call your name, please approach one of the two microphones and clearly state your name, address, and your district and the item on the agenda that you are speaking about. First is Mr. Stan Kemp, Velma Head, Phyllis Turner, Anthony Fulton, Louise Talbert. If any of those persons are present, please come to one of the microphones. Please state your name, address, and the item you're speaking about.
Good. Good afternoon. My name is Velma Head. I live on Skyview Drive, District One, Item 14, which is the 2210 Wallace Road development. We're trying to get a limit as to the type of zoning. We're asking for R3 zoning with 12 or fewer houses. Something done about the infrastructure on Wallace Road to accommodate additional traffic. And hopefully, we can get a vote on that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Louise Talbert. I live on Happy Better Circle. And I'm here to speak on Z22-007, which is 2210 Wallace Road rezoning. I am with the overwhelmingly majority of those who live in the Wallace Road community, who oppose this zoning. First, we want R3 zoning, not R4 nor R4A. R3 zoning with 12 homes is the zoning and the density that the community believes that best preserves the public health, safety, morality, and the welfare of our community. R3 zoning maintains the lot size and setback that are consistent with the look and the character of Wallace Road corridor. And R4, R4A does not. R4 and R4A will have homes packed, closer together. And that is not what the community wants. All other developers and home builders that have built homes on and off Wallace corridor have done so at R1, R2, and R3. Ms. Crowley should be no different. Second, we want fully to maintain the free market transfer to maintain the free market transfer of property in our community and do not want any D-restricted property. Ms. Crowley has not offered anything in writing to the city indicating that her agreement not to pursue D-restriction. Third, there are so many unanswered questions about this development. Ms. Crowley herself is not a professional developer, a licensed home builder. We do not know who will actually build these homes, what their designs would be, the general stability of financing for this development, and who will ultimately be developing this subdivision. Our community and the investments we have made in it is too important to allow for speculative and uncertain development, where so many question remains. For this reason, I'm asking the council and their staff to respect our community and vote no for this rezoning. Thank you.
Mr. Stan Kemp, Phyllis Turner, Anthony Fulton.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Turner, and I live in the Madison Trace subdivision, James Madison Drive. I'm here to ask the council to consider the impact on the community, the media community. Respectfully, as I've stated in every presentation, that I am not opposed to Ms. Crowley's um, development. I support her and her development. What I am opposed to is disrupting the community in such a way that it disregards the established character of the community. And to that end, I have respectfully offered alternatives to Ms. Crowley's proposal in that the current zoning is R3, it's already zoned agriculture, and it's zoned that way for a reason. And because we have now um, more progressive U.S. Department of Agriculture that considers the impact of its actions on what the government calls socially disadvantaged communities, and that's the government's designation, that land could easily be used for um, conservation, and it would not be at any loss of funds or any, any uh, disadvantage to Ms. Crowley. Yes, it would require some legwork, but she's put in a lot of legwork already to get, to push this project through. And so we're asking for consideration of alternative plans for the development on Wallace Road. And respectfully, we ask the council to consider the impact of a vote in favor of the proposed development as it now stands, and also consider the long-range impact of the Wallace Road um, Sandtown community if the vote is, is, is made in favor of the proposed development. So we would respectfully ask you to consider the long-term impact on the community. Thank you.
Next five speakers, Anthony Fulton, Stan Kemp, Jewel Johnson, Rashard Snellings, Chandra Simmons, and Dee Claiborne.
Good evening, distinguished mayor and council. My name is Anthony Fulton. I'm a resident of Madison Trace on James Madison Drive. I come to you today to state our case in representing, in representation of Wallace Road, the 22, 2210 project. The residents don't agree on all issues affecting our community, but however, we have come together mutually to understand and agree on this matter. Zoning, R3. Eighty-five percent of the area is on R3, which brings low density. Now Councilwoman Rouse and the property owner, Ms. Crowley, wants to approve a zone for R4A, which will bring moderate density to our area without the proper infrastructure so that it would be financially feasible for Ms. Crowley. Also, Ms. Crowley does not have financial support from bank investors and do not have a contract of any sort with a developer to develop this property. If Ms. Crowley cannot develop this property under the conditions listed below, Wallace Road community is not willing to compromise our standard and quality of life for over sixty years for a financial gain. Wallace Road community conditions provide proof of funding and contract with a partnered developer. Maintain zoning R3. See the map. Unfortunately, I'm not able to give out those uh, but anyway, the map indicates that eighty-five percent of our area and community is R3. Number of houses, twelve, and only twelve. Let me state that again, because that is the factor in which we are fighting for. Twelve homes. Um, we would like to have a current traffic study. The study that was represented on January nineteenth meeting was from two thousand seventeen to twenty one, two thousand twenty-one. City officials said that they will redo the study, but it would not be ready for January twenty-fourth meeting. The update study is very important to the approval of this decision. The buffer, there was a buffer that was identified that would be for the property if they build the homes. I had pictures, but unfortunately, they was too large to print out. There is no buffer on the property that would allow. Also, with that, we would like to have a cell lane, sidewalks, and lighting if this project is approved.
Mr. Fulton, that's your, your two minutes.
Thank you.
It's Mr. Kemp, present. Mr. Kemp? So Jewel Johnson, Rashard Snellings, Pamela Harris, Chandra Simmons, and Dee Claiborne.
Good to see you back in person, Ms. Johnson. Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you. I'm Jewel Johnson, and I reside in District One at forty-six sixty, Orkney Lane. And I want to speak on two of the items that's on the agenda. The first one, I'll just piggyback real quickly. I do support the people who have come here tonight about the Wallace Road project. That's part of my community as well. And one of the things that I want to say about that is, it is very unfair and unethical for a sitting council person to take a developer around knocking on doors, trying to get them to follow what it is that they want them to follow. And the next thing that I want to talk about is, and y'all bear with me, I walked out and left my glasses, is one carrier insur- uh, the sanitation for the people. What I want to say about that tonight, I want to respectfully ask each one of the council people, please do not sign that, because the, the people of the city of South Fulton has overwhelmingly asked you not to do that, because what they would like to do is to remain the same way we've been all along. Because number one, when you look at what's happening in our country, we're in a recession, and it's been projected that this one would be worse or almost the same as the repression in nineteen twenty-nine. And that happened before I was even born, but my ninety-eight-year-old father has told me many, many things about that. And we have to look at the fact that most of our money comes from homeownership. We are the last one hired and the first fired. There are so many companies that's already uh, laying their people off. Even Ford Motor Company is laying off people. Amazon, just to name a few. They're in there. When you look at what's happening in terms of how people are investing their money, there are very few investment when you have people. Anyway, please do not, and I ask again, do not vote for that one carrier.
Next is Rashard Snellings, and then Pamela Harris.
Hello, my name is Rashard Snellings. I live at nineteen eighty Locklomen Dr- Locklomen Trail in District One. Uh, we are told that this bad policy with the sanitation is necessary to force property owners to subscribe to sanitation services. Without this measure, there's already over a ninety percent compliance rate. So what exactly is being solved here? Nothing. We are also told that we need this bad policy to stop people from littering. Atlanta has this model, and according to Forbes, Atlanta is in the top ten list of dirtiest cities in America. This bad policy does not solve that problem either. Again, this bad policy solves nothing but creates the risk of tax lanes ultimately leading to foreclosures with families being tossed on the street. Like the Wallace Road project and the nomination of, of Williams for mayor pro temp, this terrible policy needs to be denied. With respect to the approval of the January work session, Ms. Jones, like many residents, it hurt my heart to watch how you were publicly scolded in the last work session meeting by two members of our council. I was moved by the grace in which you handled, handled it um, when they came for you and they, when they violated the cor- the quorum ordinance. As the council considers approval of the work session minutes, I just want to thank you for all that you do, regardless of, regardless of what those two think. You have thousands of people who want to see you win, because when the city manager wins, so does the city. Thank you for your continued commitment to service, and we cannot wait to see the great things that you do for our city. We will, we will take care of what happened two weeks ago in November. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Harris. I live in District One, Montclair Estates. I'd like to ask the council to contact all of your constituents and explain how not paying trash bills could impact their lives. For instance, what happens if a senior resident home is paid for in full that has no escrow account and develops dementia or Alzheimer's disease? Once these trash bills are added to the residents' tax bills, it could result in foreclosure if not paid. Free enterprise is an economic system that provides individuals the opportunity to make their own economic decisions free from government constraints. It seems that our council persons are using their authority to make life-changing decisions that are opposed by the majority. Wallace Road, for example. The owner of Latham Sanitation located in District Three on Welcome All Road will more than likely be the dumping site for the entire city. Waste Pro's better business complaints are egregious. By state law, the city will have to provide recycling. Council members, when are you going to have that available? And lastly, why is Derek Hall, Director of Community Development, leaving us? Who is or what is the problem? So now, it is, is it the plan to rehire Clark, Peterson, Lee, and Rebecca Kifer? Looking back, going back to bad relationships is like taking a shower and putting on dirty underwear. Ms. Jones, you are liked and respected. Hang in there. The constituents have your back. City of South Fulton, as the, as the stomach turns.
The next two speakers are present via Zoom. The first speaker, Ms. Chandra Simmons. You would unmute yourself. Uh, please state your name, address, the item you're referencing, and you will have two minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Chandra Simmons. I reside on Ravenswood, and I'm calling in response to Item fourteen, which is Z22 hyphen zero one seven, zero Estes is that address. In accordance to the city of South Fulton's comp plan, page fifty-nine, outlined by the red circle, is the quarry impact area. Estes and Ravenswood Drive is clearly within the quarry impact area. The quarry is less than a quarter of a mile from the Ravenswood Estes location. The city of South Fulton zoning code states that no portion of the proposed residentially zoned or used property shall be located within one and a half mile radius of the property line of an existing active rock quarry. We, the community of Ravenswood, Estes, Sable Run, as well as Clearwater, which was recently added, and by recently, I'm referring to the last hearing, we clearly, and we clearly oppose the development. Furthermore, let's be clear, that if this development is allowed, not only is the city of South Fulton subject to legal actions by future homeowners, as well as you, the named members of the voting council. In conclusion, I sincerely ask, what are we, the communities of the city of South Fulton, what should we reference to guide us as it relates to the do's and don'ts? If we cannot rely upon you following the rules, regulations outlined within our comp's plan, land use plan, and any other reference material, I respectfully scratch that. We respectfully at, of the, the communities of Ravenswood, Estes, Sable Run, and Clearwater are collectively asking you, council members, to vote no to zero, excuse me, vote no to Z22 hyphen zero one seven rezoning. Thank you.
The item that we removed from the agenda, which was the quarterly town hall, um, I would, given the circumstances specifically, but just in general, um, I think that we should let her speak. If we publish an agenda with items and people travel here to speak about that item, it doesn't seem fair that they would be blocked from speaking because we decided, once we got here, to remove that item. Uh, that's on the agenda.
On the board, the mayor.
Yes, the councilwoman Willis.
Uh, would you allow the clerk to speak about, what is that comment for?
The comment is regarding the shooting of McQuavious Blanchard at Camelot Club and the action of the Fulton County Police Department.
That is not on the agenda, mayor.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to read uh, the Town Hall Quarterly Series Courageous Conversations, Guns Down, It Takes a Village. Uh, Ms. Blanchard, whose son is in the hospital, traveled here to speak about gun violence because this was on the agenda. I would respectfully ask uh, for us to hear this mother out, um, who has come to talk about gun violence.
Are you asking us to vote on this um, in reference to allow her to speak regarding gun violence? Or what are you, I mean, because, I mean, we do have an ordinance.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms., Ms. Blanchard to come down. You have two minutes, Ms. Blanchard.
My name is Apollonia Blanchard.
Order, the attorney is speaking. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Blanchard. We have an ordinance, so the attorney is just trying to advise you how we should proceed with this, that's all.
You have to sus- you have to vote to suspend the rule so that you can proceed out of your normal course.
I move to suspend the-
Go ahead.
I move to suspend the uh, rules at this point in time.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, before I call for the vote, I really do want to get some, some clarity about this ordinance, not just for tonight, but after we publish an agenda and people come to speak in public comment on the agenda that we- on the agenda that we published, can we stop them from speaking by removing the item from the agenda once they show up? If we can, then we need to... I would ask for you to just get us a legal memo on that. When we say that people can only speak on items that are on the agenda, is that the published agenda? Or is that the agenda that we make up once they get here?
I think... I'm in a queue, if you don't mind.
Councilwoman Gomes.
No, I was just going to say if that is the concern or what we need to do is look at amending the ordinance to make it work for whatever we are trying to do. But at this time, you know, based off of the current ordinance, we just need to follow the rules, suspend the order, if that is our desire, and then move forward. But if this is something that you are desiring to change, then you need to move through the legislative process and amend it.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm in a queue.
Councilwoman Willis.
And so, Mayor, I mean, I'm not sure why you're trying to make this divisive. The whole point of me saying, should we vote on this, is because I knew we had an ordinance. And to just do something without suspending the rules is a violation of the ordinance per the charter. So, this is all we're trying to do, is follow the rules. And I do agree with Councilwoman Gomes. If this is something that you feel that should be changed, please amend the ordinance, send it through the legislative process, let the body review, and let us properly change it. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, I'll call for the vote.
Let's roll call vote to suspend the rules. Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously.
Go ahead, Ms. Blanchard. You have two minutes.
My name is Aphlonia Blanchard. I reside at 135 Fruitwood Trace, Zone Six. I'm here today because my son was gunned down in Camelot condominiums on Tuesday, disposing of trash in their community. He was approached by guys, asking him why would he dispose of their trash in their community. At some point, my son got in the vehicle and he was shot down. I'm here today to ask that there be security placed in Camelot condominiums due to there are young children and people that reside there for their safety. And also, we need some kind of community center for the youth out there in Zone Six. And also, the response from the police department. I just want to speak on that because I was never, ever approached by the detective, not even as of today, about what happened to my son. And I will leave it there.
Thank you, Ms. Blanchard. I'm sure that we have... Our police chief is here and we have some detectives here. I'm sure someone will speak with you before you leave. Thank you for your comments and for traveling down. Ms. Claiborne is back in the comment queue.
Yeah, Mr. Claiborne, he is available. Mr. Claiborne, if you can hear me, please unmute and...
Yes, sir.
Yes, please state your name and address, and you have two minutes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor, come out. Esteemed City Council of South Fulton, my name is Dee Claiborne. I'm at 3490 Ravenswood Drive. We, the residents of SDs and Ravenswood, implore you to deny the rezoning of Zero SDs and to reassess the property to ascertain its appropriate future uses. We have four good reasons to deny this rezoning, but I won't go in depth into all four because Ms. Simmons kind of covered some of that territory. It is inconsistent with the adjoining neighborhood. Not only would this development negatively impact the senior citizens who live on Ravenswood and SDs by connecting these two roads, but the lot sizes and setbacks are not consistent with the established neighborhood it would be adjoining. As a part of the original covenant, there's a minimum 50-foot setback on all our lots, most of which of these lots are listed at just under one-half acre. Connecting the two roads would create a racetrack-style loop to Buffington, which would endanger the lives of the many senior citizens who bought their retirement homes on these quiet dead-end streets and walk these streets for exercise. As to the second point of access requirement by the Fire Marshal's Office, the number of units provided is well below the threshold to require a second point of entry. It's long been established that this property is unsuitable for development. Even the developer in 2005 that petitioned to have this zoning changed from Ag 1 to R 3 backed out after finding many issues with this property. According to the City's zoning code, Section 302.35D, it is inconsistent with the zoning code of the City of South Fulton. And Ms. Simmons touched on the legal nightmare that this would create for the City of South Fulton. The developer will tell you that there are other houses in the area around this lot, which is ironic because the damages to those homes and the respiratory problems of their occupants are the reasons the quarry impact zone was created. And any further residential development prohibited around the quarry, warranties expire, and waivers signed by home purchasers are not signed by all the persons who would be living in these homes.
Mr....
The city councils should be not concerned about a lawsuit. Yes, sir.
Mr. Claiborne, that is your time. If you could just wrap it up in the next 15 seconds.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The city council should be less concerned about a lawsuit from denying the zoning because they're elected to enforce the city zoning resolution, which is adopted under state authority to protect the life, safety, and well-being of the current and future residents of our great city. Thank you sincerely.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, that completes the public comment cards that we received for this evening's meeting.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item is council comments.
We'll start... We'll go backwards this time. We'll start with our new councilwoman, Lynda Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out to our meeting tonight. I am very excited to say, as the newest council member, that I attended my first Georgia Municipal Association training at the Cities United Conference. I would also like to congratulate my colleagues, Councilwoman Rau and Councilwoman Willis, who received awards at the conference. I was very excited about learning about some great information related to funding transportation projects. So I look forward to working with Mr. Valenzuela in Public Works and identifying areas in our community that need improvement, like potholes or just different structures or things that we need to improve. So also, feel free to contact me if you have things in District Seven that you think need some attention. I also would like to say that last night we had our first town hall meeting and it was very well-attended. Thank you for everyone who came out. We had a few special guests, State Representative Sheila Jones and State Representative Tish Nagisi, who is our newly-elected representative. And they're both a part of the South Fulton delegation. I also want to thank Mr. Burkett, who came out and gave a great presentation on our sanitation program, did some question and answering. And also, a thank you to the police department and Corporal Garvin, who came out and made a great presentation about public safety. So I look forward to planning future events and working with my colleagues and everyone to make South Fulton where you enjoy the greatest quality of life.
Thank you. District Six, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comments.
District Five, Mayor Pro Tem, Corey Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Comments is, I'd like to thank Mr. Holland, his outfit, for coming and hosting a conversation around housing choices and also speaking with the community of Riggins Ridge and handling their situation and bringing D.R. Horton brass to the table. Thanks to Captain Tooke and her outfit as well for community policing and hosting with the fire as well and a public safety forum at Burdette's, round one of three. Thanks to the people who join the Monday night call each and every Monday. I really do appreciate y'all. I call y'all my kitchen cabinet. Shouts out to you guys. And just looking forward to great things that's happening in the future. And one of the things is, I too was at the Municipal Association where I received my Robert E. Knox Leadership Training Certificate. And I also was in class learning a whole lot. But particularly, one thing in leadership, I was not there Sunday to receive the award because I was out doing the title. I was leading, providing leadership in certain areas that I needed to do. But one of the things as a leader, you have to... And when you lead people, it's good to be saluted and awarded, but leaders do fail too sometimes, you know? And we make mistakes. Normal. But one that I want to correct that I can because I did it as Mayor Pro Tem and I want to do it openly as Mayor Pro Tem. So to chair and make a lead, I would like to offer you an apology, sir, publicly because I issued early in my tenure a vote of no confidence. And certain things that we talked about and going on and down and providing leadership, one of the things that we can do is have conversations that can lead to corrective action outside of the public. And so that... But I criticize publicly, I can apologize publicly. And so I will just say that to you, sir. And as we move forward, to all, let's move together as a team because the only thing that is required of us is to do the people's business and put the people before anything. And that is, to me, the fundamental belief of why I became a public servant. And I will always continue to do that, no matter what. And so, to the constituency, I love you and you can't do nothing about it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reeves. District Four, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, happy New Year to everyone who is here for one of our meetings for the first time and even those staff members that I haven't yet seen for the first time of the year. I just want to thank everyone who came out to celebrate our 6-8 championship team, football team, Langston Hughes Panthers, a couple Saturdays ago. Was not able to participate as planned, but that's okay. But the people who need to be celebrated were celebrated. And I just want to thank staff, you know, Jessica, who's my aide, Ms. Smooth, Public Works, and I know I'm going to forget some people, even Ms. Tamiko from District Five stepped in and gave some assistance, the police and fire department, and all those who participated in what was, I believe, District Four's first championship parade. Not our first championship, but our first championship parade. So hopefully, we would set a standard. As well, I celebrated this month my one-year anniversary of being a council member. Again, I just want to thank the people of District Four for their confidence in sending me here. I am still as excited as I was when I walked in the door on January 4, 2022, took that oath of office. And I know we have challenges as a district, we have challenges as a city. And I'm just hoping to work along with my colleagues and staff in trying to meet some of those challenges. Again, thank you, everyone, for your support over the past year and I look forward to working with each and every one of you, not only across the city, but especially the great people of the Green District of District Four in making our district even better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian. And that was our... I believe that was our city's first championship parade. So not just District Four, but our entire city has our first championship parade. Thank you so much for putting that together. District Three, the place to be, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me. I want to, first of all, give my sincerest condolences to Ms. Blanchard and Ms. Sally Jones. What really bothers me about part of her comments is that, you know, she mentioned that we need park and recreation facilities. We need park and recreation facilities in the city so that our kids can have something to do. And so, what really annoys me is that there is one 1.7 miles right around the corner from Camelot. And what that tells me is that people don't know that we have parks and recreation facilities and what programs are available in our city. And we really need to get that information out because as the spring and summer is underway, we really need to get these facilities open and we need to get the programs in our facilities because our kids who are of age, who are not of age to go out and get jobs, they do need to be in our facilities with programs and something to do. Burdette Park is 1.7 miles from Camelot and it's open. And they got basketball programs. And we need to highlight what other programs they have available. And I hope that the council member from District Five reaches out to Ms. Blanchard. And I pray that her son pulls through. We also have Creole Park in the area. We have Sandtown that is under construction, but it's closed. Hopefully, it'll be open by the summer. We have Welcome All Park. The pool, the only pool that we have in the city that we have invested $1.7 million in is currently under construction. And I am hoping that we will have that open by the summer or not, sometime in the summer. But we still... But the park is open and it has programs. And I would ask that you ask staff to get an update on, out to the community, and I've asked this last week, on when these projects are going to be complete, when our facilities are going to be open, and what programs we have available to the residents in our city. Residents, I would ask that you, if you live in District Three, please come and get the facts and the truth. I am having two town halls. I'm having one Thursday, February 2, at Welcome All Park from 5 to 7. There will be city staff there to talk about the economic development specific to District Three and the sanitation program that is underway. I am also having a meeting on the other side of my district at Enan Church, the Enan Church, February 16.
February 16.
Thursday from 5 to 7 p.m. And that is on the other side of District Three. And I will have Economic Development Director there and the sanitation manager, Gordon Burdette Burkett, there to talk about the sanitation program underway. Please come out and get the facts and the truth. You will not have a sanitation bill tied to your tax bill. That is not true, and I want to correct that. Arthur Fernand would not collect tax, would not collect sanitation in that manner. He doesn't do it for Atlanta that way. He doesn't do it for Sandy Springs that way. And he doesn't do it for any other city that way. Your tax bill and your sanitation bill will not be combined. And then we are also, Councilwoman Gomes and I, will be co-sponsoring along with our Commissioner, Marvin Arrington, in to commemorate Black History Month. We did this last year and we're doing it again along with Hurzaros, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, chapter out of Atlanta. The City of Atlanta Bowlegs will be featured here at Southwest Art Center. I've seen it, "Riot in Delton", and it's a very good documentary. Former Supreme... I mean, not Supreme. I gave him elevation, Superior Court, former Superior Court Judge Marvin Arrington, Sr. And then we are also co-sponsoring together at Wayfield, at the Red Oak Plaza, at the Wayfield Store in Red Oak Plaza, Plastic Free Giveway. This is a plastic-free city. And so we will be there distributing your reusable shopping bags and reusable straws. And we will have other vendors there to give you information. And we will have other vendors there to give you information on what it means to be a plastic-free city. And that is going to be February 4th, 10:00 A.M. at Wayfield Plaza. I want to thank the many residents that are here. This is what is supposed to happen. We can only build the city with you, and if you see something, say something. If you don't want something, say something, advocate for it. After all, these are, these are your seats. And although we may not always, we're not perfect, we are all individuals, and we may not always get it right, but I hope that we all move at the speed and of your voices and your wishes. Because we were a city found on self-determination, and most of us, most of you all that are sitting in this audience were here way before we decided to create a city of South Fulton. And I do appreciate all of your work and all of your efforts and to help get us thus far. We're only five years here as a city, and most of you all have been in this community 30 to 40 years. And thank you.
Thank you. District Two, Councilwoman Gums.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. First, I want to thank all of the residents that came out for our important Transportation Town Hall last week in the rain. There was some great information that was provided, and we got a clear update on the projects that are happening in our city. Also want to thank G-Dod for also participating and sharing some important updates. Also, too, as Councilwoman Willis mentioned, we will be doing the plastic-free giveaway. Of course, this is a city that is plastic-free. One of the things that she didn't mention was that we will be taking this to our grocery stores within the city of South Fulton. So this will be the start of our very first plastic-free giveaway. We want residents to be able to use these reusable bags and really start understanding and protecting our environment. So we're looking forward to participating on the 4th and then also to taking a tour around the city. Also, too, on February the 9th, we will be hosting our Public Safety Town Hall featuring Fire Department. We all know that there is this fabulous fire training facility that is coming to our district, and we will be talking about the progress that has happened and then also to the unveiling of the renderings of what this building and campus will look like. So I do encourage you all to come out on February the 9th at Wolf Creek Library at 6:00 P.M. Again, our Fire Department will be there as well. Also, too, we, on the Day of Love, everybody loves Valentine's Day. This has been one of our events that we had to suspend during the pandemic. We are bringing back the Senior Sweetheart Day Party, and we will be having it at Enan Ranch. We ask that if you are 55 and up and you live in the city of South Fulton, come out and fellowship with us. It will be at Enan Ranch off of Enan Road. We will have food, entertainment, and lots of fun as we celebrate you all for the Month of Love. So if you're looking for a new boo, you probably can find it there. We had a fabulous time last year, so that will be from 11:00 to 3:00. And then we'll come to a council meeting after that. Now, it's in conjunction with Councilwoman Rouse, so we're looking forward to that. And lastly, I do want to take a moment to recognize that this is the 50th anniversary of Roe versus Wade. As you know, I'm a staunch advocate for women's rights, and I just want you all to know that January 22nd marked the 50th anniversary for Roe versus Wade and protecting women's rights. So you will be seeing legislation coming forth next month as we continue to support and make the city of South Fulton one of those cities that really support women here. And that is all I have, and I hope you have a fabulous day, and please don't keep us here all night. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gums. That Valentine's Day event sounds really nice. District One, Councilwoman Rouse.
Thank you.
Dr. Rouse.
First, I want to extend my prayers to Ms. Blanchard and her family at this time. My prayers are with you. As Councilwoman Gums said, we look forward to seeing you February 14th from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Enan Ranch at the Senior Day Party. Again, we had to suspend this, as she said, it's been actually two years, maybe three. So we're looking forward to bringing that event back. Finally, at our last meeting in December, which was December 13, I have followed up with the community, and I'm taking this time to speak about it because in zoning cases, we only vote. I wanted to say I have received extensive communication out of that meeting, January 19th, so I see you. I also want to let you know I am a receipt of the petition for those in support. Zoning is probably one of the most difficult things we do on the city council, and trying to balance those issues that we hear for communities is challenging. But hopefully, the stipulations that you'll hear about later address some of that. So thank you, one, for your presence and your participation. And finally, I do want to respond directly to something that was said at public comment. I have never knocked on anybody's door regarding this case or any other zoning case that would come before me. And I had to say that because that's a direct reflection on my integrity, and I wouldn't be involved in such. So, Ms. Johnson, I just wanted to address that, you know, before we put out information. It needs to be fact-checked because I've never done that, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rouse. I'm gonna just share my screen for these comments. We do, I am going to ask that you all keep order in, in the, out there in the audience as we just proceed with this meeting. There will be time after the meeting for you all to meet with us in the lobby. Some of us come out after the meeting, some of us come out during intermission, and so you will be able to continue those conversations in just a few moments. First, I want to make sure that you all know that rental and mortgage assistance is available. Our city has or is releasing $330,000 in rental and mortgage assistance. You can apply at cityofsouthfulton.g. gov. It's also at callicareers.com. If you click on the flyer, it'll take you right to the link. Again, thank you, everyone who came out and braved the cold weather for our state championship Langston Hughes Panthers, and those who came out for the Mayor's Brunch. We had a very great conversation and even better food. Thank you, Ms. Frederica Jones in Sandtown Pub. I also want to give a special shout-out to our Director of Code Enforcement, Brian Morris, our Director of Planning and Zoning, otherwise known as Community Development and Regulatory Affairs, Mr. Derek Hall, and our Director of Public Works, Mr. Antonio Valenzuela. You all contributed greatly to the conversation. Everyone there learned so much. Also want to give a special shout-out to Four Colors Mastino and the Healing Community Center for coming out and talking about the incredible work that you're doing in our communities. We will have more Mayor's Brunches. The next one is coming to District Four, Cedar Grove. So we've been north, we've been south, we're going to go out west for the next one. So you want to stay tuned to, just make sure that you sign up for text messages and alerts and newsletters. We'll make sure that you all know about it, and it'll hopefully be on our website as well. As you all have heard, we have an incredible town hall happening here in this room Thursday night. So the town hall starts at 7:00, but at 5:00 P.M., obviously, we're going to have a very courageous conversation about gun violence particularly plaguing our youth. And one of the things that is unique about this town hall is that we didn't want to just tell young people to put the guns down without putting something in their hands that was both positive and profitable. So out here in this very lobby from 5:00 to 7:00 before the town hall, there will be an opportunity fair, several people that do work in the community. And I do want to shout out some of the amazing people that I know that are here now, Gary Davis, Next Level Boys Academy, Rick Ross, the music producer, not the rapper, who has an incredible music education group who's starting their programming here in the city of South Fulton, and many, many, many others will be here signing up young people for mentorships, for internships, and maybe even hiring some folks for jobs. And we're also going, part of the, part of the series of panels will be a group of young millionaires, under 40, here from the city of South Fulton that are going to talk about how they've made their money legally and hopefully give our young people some hope. If you don't have to go to college, you don't have to have straight As and Bs to be a very successful person here in our city. So you can text the word VILLAGE to 55444 to sign up. I'm pretty sure we'll run out of spaces before the night is up, so if you're interested in coming, you can text VILLAGE to 55444. If you are under 16, you will need a parent or guardian, an adult, to come with you, so make sure that they text as well. This is a ticketed-only event. As you can see, we only have about 375 seats in here, so everyone won't be able to make it in. But we will be streaming it live on WorldStar Hip Hop, and we will then rebroadcast it as well through our channels here. And lastly, but not leastly, the first dog, Zion invites you all out once again to our monthly dog party. We're going to do a champagne, it's a little late, but we're going to do a champagne toast to the New Year's. There's always free giveaways and demonstrations for pet owners to learn how they can be better pet, better pet owners for their dogs, and lots of free giveaways, toys and chew toys, all sorts of edible delights for our four-legged friends. So please come out. We're at Canine Crossing Park, 4951 Camp Drive, 30349. As always, you can meet with myself and the public advocate. You can just call our office, 470-809-7710. Every Monday that I'm in town, I have Mayor Mondays. Anyone can come and get 20 minutes with the mayor, whether you're a resident or not, whether you are homeowner or not. If you just have something on your heart that you want to share with our office, please come out. And as always, you can find this information and more at callicareers.com, or you can text the word FOLTON to 33777 to sign up for my newsletters and mobile alerts. Thank you for listening, South Fulton forever.
Let me make a point of personal privilege.
Personal privilege. I'm recognizing Councilman Sebastian.
I just wanted to take this point of privilege to thank one person who came out to the parade. That's our clerk. So thank you for coming out and your help in executing things and keeping things straight that morning was really, really valuable. So it would be remiss of me if I went on and thanked everyone else and didn't thank you, so. So thanks again, okay? Yeah, also want to, the mayor reminded me, the person who had to step in sort of at the last minute, Michelle Taylor Willis, to be our, to be our emcee as well for that program. Thank you again, Michelle, for stepping up and for helping us, helping us out in our time of need. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, we're at the Consent Agenda, Roman numeral 10.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, this is a vote to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number seven to the regular agenda. Roll call vote, Councilmember Rouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reeves.
Hi.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Please sound the next item.
Mayor Khalid, is your cue working?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman Willis. Did you, did you have an item?
No, I just was checking because I was, I got in a few times and didn't get recognized. I just want to make sure that it's working.
Okay, no, it, no, it is.
All right.
Is it working, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
All right. Go ahead and sound that next item, sir.
Next item is Roman numeral 11, Alcohol License Rezoning Variants Modification Cases. This is for a motion and vote. The first one this evening is item 13, Z22-007. Request counsel consideration to rezon from AG1 zoning district to R4 zoning district to construct 26 single-family residential dwellings on 12.60 acres of land. Subject property is located at 2210 Wallace Road and within the Sandtown Overlay District located in District One. The item was deferred at the, from the December 13, 2022 council meeting. And for the record, I believe the staff is presenting a revision to the original request.
All right, I will, Steph?
So I'm simply no discussion.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Derek Hall reporting on behalf of the Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Department. Since the initial public hearing that we had in December, the applicant has revised the site plan, and it is in line now with our 4A designation. And so respectfully, the applicant has reduced the number of units from 26 to 21 units. And that was the addition that was discussed at the community meeting last Thursday. If there are any specific items related to the development of that, I believe the applicant is here to address those questions.
Could we have the applicant come up and just review? I understand, Dr. Rouse, there were some changes that were made.
A number of stipulations, yeah.
All right, did you want to have them come up, or how would you?
I defer to you. I mean, this is not typical, so I don't know.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. We'll just ask the applicant to be on standby just in case, but I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I did, although I wasn't going to have an applicant, I think the Public Works Department could speak to the traffic study because that was one of the things that the council had asked about.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Valenzuela.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and residents of the city of South Fulton. I'm sorry, Ms. City Manager as well. With regards to the traffic analysis that was done at Wallace Road, we have done the traffic count and provided a recommendation on what we encountered with the, with the counts. At our point, we didn't see anything that went over the 85 percentile on the road. However, due to the questions from some of the residents, we, we advised the residents that we will do a local traffic, traffic count at two more locations, coming from Campbellton and going to, to Enan Road on Wallace Road. We still don't believe that that's going to exceed the 85 percentile because of stretches that we have on Wallace Road. As you might know, if we do the, the math on what space means, it's, it's the speed times times. It's very difficult that a vehicle will exceed the 35 mile per hour going to 46 mile per hour in a, in a small stretch. I'm sure there's other issues, but at this point, the results of the count and the traffic analysis was presented, and we stand behind that through our traffic engineering as well.
We're not in discussion yet because I haven't entertained a motion, but I'm gonna, this is, this is a little different. I would just like to pause. I know that there are stipulations. Could we just read those into the record?
Yeah.
And if it's possible to place them on the screen so that everyone can see what it is that we would actually be voting on.
Mayor, I can't, Mayor, I just want to make sure that, because this is not a public hearing, and if we do, I mean, we want to make sure that we can defer, confer with our attorneys because we don't want, if we give certain... we would have to let the public speak too because it's not a public hearing.
Right, I agree.
No, I, I understand all of that, but we, are we about to vote?
I, I want to read it in. It's, it's the staff recommendation. So I'd make a motion, but I do have some, one additional stipulation in addition. So I would read them into the record as presented because they've already been vetted by the staff.
All right, is, is it, do you have those? Is there any way to just pull them up so that everyone can see what we're, what you're reading?
Yeah, it's in a packet. So I move that we request we'll approve a rezoning from AG1 to R4A to construct not more than twenty-five single-family residential dwellings. The use of the property shall be single-family dwellings. The site plan shall be in general conformity with the conceptual site plan included in the staff report. All dwellings should have a minimum of two-car garages. A homeowners association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants, regulating sustainable uses and structures with no age restriction for seniors. The proposed walking trail material shall be either mulch, wood chip, crushed stone, or recyclable materials. Construct a deceleration lane on Wallace Road into the site. Provide curb and gutter and five-foot sidewalks along the entire frontage of Wallace Road and inside the interior of the street. The private street shall be constructed to City of South Fulton Public Street standards. Along the frontage of Wallace Road, there should be a minimum of twenty-five-foot-wide natural undisturbed buffer with a ten-foot improvement setback with decorative privacy fencing. And I would ask that a geotechnical study be completed before land disturbance permit is issued. A correction, that the attorney said, that I said no more than twenty-five. I was amending it, that it couldn't be more than twenty-one. So I just wanted to make sure that was addressed, the reduction.
All right. I got it, Councilwoman Willis. Did you make a motion?
Yeah, that was a motion.
Okay, was this, was it seconded?
I just finished it, so I don't know.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Now that it has been properly moved and seconded, Okay.
My substitute motion would be that we zone the land to R3 to allow for no more than twelve homes. That we not have any deed restrictions. And that would be my substitute motion to the motion made and seconded.
Would your substitute motion, the, the limitation for twelve homes, would you keep all of the other stipulations that were just stated?
Yes, I will, I mean, I'm okay with keeping all the other stipulations as long as it's R3 and no more than twelve homes.
Right. Is there a second for the substitute motion? There is a second. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Pritchett?
I did have a question about, I guess, maybe from Mr. Hull. If this property is located on wetlands, were there any environmental impact studies done?
Yes, ma'am. This particular property, as a part of the application process, we have an environmental impact assessment that has to be submitted. And so as it relates to the comment that was made by Councilmember Rau, that prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, there will be geotechnical reports that will be required.
Thank you.
All right, next in the queue, Councilman Sebastian.
First of all, can you flush out what the geotechnical study? I think I know what it's going to reveal, but for my benefit and maybe for others who are not familiar with those fancy terms, can you explain to us what that would do?
Sure, Councilwoman, Councilmember Sebastian. The geotechnical report will provide us with an understanding of the topography, the soil, the stabilization of what can be constructed, what cannot be constructed. And then we'll make recommendations if there are activities such as fill, dirt removal, and having to stabilize the area so that it can support the type of construction that's being proposed.
And could that study make this project not viable?
Potentially it can. Typically, in situations like this, there are always remedial recommendations that can come forward to stabilize the land.
Okay. So my, my next, I must commend Councilwoman Rau. Are you open to an amendment that if this council were to go along with this and that there are issues that arise further down the road, then the zoning would revert back to the current status before change?
I, I, I got it, I got it, I got it, Councilwoman Willis. There is, there is a substitute motion on the floor.
Okay.
Should the substitute motion fail, your question is, do you want to just restate your question?
Yeah, if we can revert the zoning back, if the project then becomes to, yeah, becomes not viable. That, that's just my recommendation, if we pass it. Because there's still a lot of things up in the air.
I mean, I'm, if the attorney says I'm, I'm open to that, I would have to add.
Okay.
He said he needs clarification of your question, the attorney said.
Go, Attorney Hyman?
So, Councilwoman Rau, maybe we need to just expound, expound a little bit on the recommendation you made. And I think that clarifies the question that Councilmember Sebastian has, is inquiring about. And that is, the recommendation from Councilmember Rau is that prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, that there has to be a, a geotechnical, geotechnical report that will support the viability of constructing the project. Without having that report, the, the land disturbance permit will not be issued.
So to be clear-
So it's contingent on a successful geotechnical report.
Okay, so, so to be clear, both motions have this geotechnical survey in them. And regardless of which motion passes, if the geotechnical survey says that we cannot build there, no land disturbance permit will be issued, and no building will occur.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Willis, you're back in the queue?
Yes, and I just want to give some context to my substitute motion. And so it was a lot of, and I'm not going to get into it because I know it's not really appropriate. But what I did ask the city attorney, and I did ask Mr. Hull. When residents were told that they could not have R3 as a zoning, was R3 an alternative? And Mr. Hull's job is to make sure that he advises protocol. So what Mr. Hull did was give me a list of all the constitutional zoning that was allowed, that can be allowed. And the zoning went from R1 to single-family, which allowed minimum lot sizes, very low density. Then it went from single-family R2. These are constitutional zonings, which went from one-acre minimum lot, single subdivisions. And then there's R3, which is what majority of the area is currently zoned for. Majority of the homes in the close proximity of this lot to be developed, most of the homes that are directly in proximity are R3. And that is consistent with the zoning, and that is lower density. To go from R, to go from AG all the way to R4, which is causing for moderate density, you know, is, is aggressive. And, and I'm not trying to be, you know, contrary, but one of the things I did learn in my zoning class and in this conference, GMA conference, is that zoning should be in alignment with the people. And so I just want us to make sure whatever we're doing is constitutional and legal. And Mr. Hull, I really do thank him because he's really neutral. If Councilmember Rau has questions for him, he's going to answer the question. If I have questions, he's going to answer the question. If I have, if, if I have questions of the attorney, they're going to tell me where I can legally operate that will limit the exposure to the city. And so what I have seconded in motion and what has been seconded is a constitutional zoning. The rest, the, the houses in that area are R3. And I don't, I think it's a reasonable request for the residents to want the zone, zoning to align with what's already in the area. They have lower density in that area, and that's what they want to keep. And I just, I, I'm taking my emotion out of it, but I just think that's, that's a reasonable request of them, especially for residents who've been in the area thirty to forty years.
Thank you, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but we, but we have to keep it moving. Councilwoman Pritchett, this is your second time.
I just wanted to ask a question for clarification in case I misunderstood. When was the last traffic study done? Was that in twenty-twenty-two, or was it in twenty-twenty-one?
If I'm not mistaken, Councilwoman Pritchett, the last traffic count for the traffic study were done in November twenty-twenty-two.
And did that traffic study include, like, morning, afternoon, evening traffic patterns?
The traffic counts were collected for seven days. And it's typical that when you do a traffic analysis, it's done on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, thank you so much.
We need, I'm just going to ask for order as we go through this process. Dr. Rau?
My questions really speak to, and again, I've been working pretty extensively with the staff and attorneys. My understanding was with this site that the portions that were not billable, and the streets that had to be installed in the conditions imposed per our zoning, that to make the project financially feasible at all. And, and that's really where I am. So I guess my question, and again, if the applicant can make this work, because the reality is, I think she mentioned it's about four million dollars in infrastructure cost she has to bear for this project. Again, trying to balance all this because no matter what, that has to be put in. So that's my question, if not, if that could be spoke to? Because I, I thought that was why the recommendation came back from the staff. So I, I just need to be clear.
Councilmember, let me try to address this in a number of ways. One of the opportunities, I won't say challenges, as staff undertakes these private developments, we don't necessarily know and understand the financial wherewithal of, from the developer's perspective. But as a city, we have our standards. And so as a part of this proposed development project, the applicant will be required to put in streets, streetlights, sewer. Right now, the sewer runs up to the road, but because of the unique development of the project, sewer will have to run the entire length of the project site deep within the project to service those particular houses. So the proposal is for twenty-one. Now, as it relates to what the costs are, that wasn't a part of our land use analysis. We can make some assumptions, though, understanding the infrastructure that is going to have to be put in place because right now, as you know, it is a vacant parcel. And sewer runs up to Wallace Road. And so there will have to be connections along with all of the infrastructure that will have to occur as a part of making this a viable project.
All right. We're going to go ahead and, and I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote now. Mr. Clerk, would you read the substitute motion as well as the other condition so that it is clear to everyone what we are voting on now?
Yes, I'll, I'll read what I have. For the substitute motion, which is a motion by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Mayor Pro-Tev Reeves, was to zone the property to the R3 zoning designation on a maximum amount of homes, twelve homes, with the deed restriction. And I believe the staff conditions are the same. The site plan should be in conformity with the conceptual site plan. All dwellings, a minimum two-car garage. Homeowners Association should be established for the proposed development. The proposed walking trail material should include either mulch, wood chips, crushed stone, recyclable materials. Construct a deceleration lane on Wallace Road into the site. Provide curb and gutter and a five-foot sidewalk along the entire frontage of Wallace Road. The private street should be constructed to the City of South Fulton Public Street standards. And along the frontage of Wallace Road, there should be a minimum twenty-five-foot-wide natural undisturbed buffer with a ten-foot improvement setback with decorative privacy fencing. Did I, did I miss any?
Yes, one more. It was one correction without deed restriction, not with deed restriction.
Without deed restrictions, okay.
All right. We have a motion, a substitute motion on the floor. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, just wanted to let the clerk know there was one other requirement, and that was prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit, a geotechnical report will be submitted.
Absolutely, thank you.
So I do have that written down, thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
This is a substitute motion.
I'll tell you.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Pro-Tev Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That motion was approved six to one.
Thank you. I, I would ask of Mr. Valenzuela that we just get this information on the, I'm sorry, Mr. Hull, that we get this information on the community development website as quickly as possible so that people can, can read about what happened today. All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item fourteen for motion and vote. Zoning case Z22-017. Request counsel consideration to rezone from R3 zoning district to R5A zoning district to construct forty-six detached, single-family homes on ten-point-nine-six acres of land. The subject property is located along SD's Drive, generally bounded by SG's Drive to the north, Ravens Drive to the east, Sabre Run Road to the south, and Clearwater Drive to the west. It's located in District Five.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I make a motion to deny this rezoning. Mr. Attorney, do I need to state for the record of why?
All right, we have a motion to deny, seconded by Councilwoman Gums. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rau?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tev Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
The motion to deny was approved unanimously.
Also too, Mr. Attorney, and Mr. Hull, I do have a question because I do want to state this for the record. For this particular space and any future land use, and we had talked about this, I would have, I would like to have AG1 green space restricted. So can we, I just want to state that for the record. Can that happen?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item is item 15, U22-012, request council consideration for a special use permit for the expansion of a transfer station to an existing Waste Pro facility within the M2 zoning district on 41.85 acres of land. Subject property is located at 4785 Fulton Industrial Boulevard, located in District 1.
All right. Before, before I entertain a motion, I do want to ask, Madam City Manager, were we, or Mr. Valenzuela, I know he was working on this too, were we able to get an EPA or EPD official to come and answer questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, they were not able to attend tonight, but any further questions that you may have on, on the permits that are necessary, I have it, that I can, I can share with council afterwards? Or we can ask for EPA, EPD to be present to do a presentation that they are, they are willing to come back and do a presentation for.
All right. Thank you. I, I, I don't get a vote on this issue. I don't get to make a motion. But I do still have questions about this process. It has not been made clear to me, whether it's the EPA or the EPD, it's not been made clear to me who's going to be monitoring this site, how often we're going to get reports on it, and what are the penalties and/or recourses if something goes wrong. I, I, I have great faith that, that things will go as planned and as described. However, we have a fire burning at Bishop Road, and we have a Superfund site at Merck Miles, because things did not go as planned when they were presented to the Fulton County Commission. And we are still trying to figure out who is responsible, what are the boundaries, who can we contact for cleanup? It's, it's, it's still not clear. I, I would hope that we might be able to postpone this item until we could have EPA and EPD officials here to talk about how this is monitored and regulated. And I would also note that this item, because I know the next item is the sanitation contract, and it is my understanding, please don't go anywhere, Mr. Valenzuela, but please disabuse me if I have this information incorrect, but it's my understanding that this station is not dependent on the sanitation contract, that these are two separate items, and that postponing this item does not in any way affect the vote that we have to take next for the sanitation contract. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Councilman Sebastian?
I was hoping we could get to the vote and then discussion. Mr. Mayor, the, the EPD is responsible for the things that happened within the state of Georgia. As far as I learn in dealing with this landfill thing, it's only under extraordinary circumstances that the feds would come in at the EPA level. And that would be on the invitation of the local authority. That's how things normally work. I don't know why this would be any, any different. So I just wanted to make some clarification there. The EPD is just like the state government for the environment, just like the EPA is the federal. And that's just how it works. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Reeves?
Madam Jones, don't we have environmental protection within the city as well? I remember seeing a position or something of that nature.
And you said a position called an environmental protection?
Well, we have, it was environmental protection, that we have that within the city.
We don't have that position.
Not available. But we do have the ability to create that, correct?
Yes.
So is it possible that we have a person who is a subject matter expert to be able to monitor this site constantly?
I don't even know how to answer that question, honestly.
So we just said that the EPD and the EPA, the EPA is the federal regulatory agency, the EPD is as well.
Right.
We have a Superfund or a potential environmental site right now going on in the City of South Fulton for the last three years. It has not been addressed by the EPA or the EPD. We, the city, can create an environmental protection division within our own city of somebody who is a subject matter expert and can get to the answers of what, one, the Superfund site that is continually to burn for three years, and then two, we're adding on this 40-plus acres for a special use permit, will they be accepting environmental waste hazards such as asbestos, such as lead?
And I think as the council member mentioned, I, I think we can still rely upon the state's assistance in regards to those particular locations.
We have a fire burning and the Superfund site burned for three years. We have contacted the EPA and the EPD.
But we've been, we've been meeting with them through Councilmember Sebastian.
Has any resolve come about those meetings?
I know that they've fined the owner.
Point of order, this is a different thing.
This is not germane, Mayor.
Is the fire still burning?
It's not germane, Mayor.
I'm going to, I, I'm.
Thank you, that's all.
Dr. Ral?
Just to clarify, all transfer stations are regulated by the Environmental Protection Division. The City of South Fulton also has its own ordinance as it relates to transfer stations that we adopted and updated, I think, at the end of last year sometime. And this site has been operating for an extended period of time. I, I mean, I just want to clear because what we're talking about is two separate things. That was a legal landfill. This one is regulated by the EPD, and we also have regulations on top of that. So I just wanted to clarify that for the benefit of the public.
Councilwoman Pritchett, are you removing yours?
The only comment I wanted to make is that if there is a need for some environmental oversight, then we have partners in the state. We have members on the South Fulton delegation in the House that are, that are actually working on something in my district environmentally. So if we do need that type of assistance, it is available through the state instead of reinventing the wheel.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Hull to, to come forward. This, this special use permit is for an expansion of the transfer station to bring in new equipment for a new process. Is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. The, the request before council is to add equipment that would sort material that would be used to create recyclable products. The recyclable products are not going to be manufactured on-site. So consider this, and I want to make sure I get it right.
Grain.
Anaerobic, digester is what it's called. Thank you. Anaerobic digester. So it took me some time to get my head around this, but consider this a large machine that sorts out plastics and recyclables and then kind of packages, packages it together, compacts it, and then that particular byproduct is sent off to make recyclable products. So it's, they will be taking, they will be bringing in additional solid waste as they're processing solid waste at the facility now. But this is a new element, a new equipment feature that is going to help them do the sorting of this, of these primary plastics, if you will.
All right. Thank you. I, I'll just close with this. I don't want to fight. I don't want to be contrary. I see that you're in the queue. I'm just going to close out my comments, and then I will go to you, Councilwoman Willis. It's a new process. I heard that it's a new process. We're bringing in materials. The reason that I think this EPD, and I will just keep it focused to EPD because they're the state, that I think that this EPD conversation is so relevant to me is because some years ago, someone came before the Fulton County Commission and said, hey, we're going to do this, this landfill at Bishop Road. And I don't know what went wrong in that process. People started bringing in things that weren't supposed to be brought in. The EPD was nowhere to be found when they were bringing them in. Now the site is on fire for three years, and we're in series of meetings trying to get this fire put out that went on because regulators were not on-site when this went awry. That's one site. That happened multiple times in South Fulton County. It also happened at Merck Miles.
Point of order, Mayor. This is not, this, this is not germane to what we are voting for, and this is not a hearing.
And, all right, so, so I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. I've said my concerns. Other people can speak. They can vote however they want. I am uncomfortable going forward. No one from the EPD is here today to answer our question. They can't even show up to answer our questions. So if something goes wrong, how hard will it be for them to come here and solve our problem? Councilwoman Willis?
We did not have questions for the EPD. I call the question, please.
Question has been called and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a motion to call the question. Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
The question has been called.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Actually, we need a main motion and a second for this item. We're on item 15. We, we need a.
The expansion of the transfer station to an existing Waste Pro facility within the M2 heavy industrial zoning district on 41.85 acres of land in District 1.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We're on item 16 under Agenda Items under Public Works. This item is request council approval of a contract with Waste Pro to provide waste services to include weekly curbside household trash and monthly bulk waste removal. The anticipated annual pass-through cost will be plus or minus $6.94 million allocated from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund established in the FY 23 budget. Public Works.
Mayor, can you please, can someone please ask the composer to stop the music? Because it's causing a disturbance every time someone opens the door. And I don't want it to pick up on the tape.
Yes, staff, can you please ask the performer to refrain? Thank you.
He was actually supposed to stop and then wait for intermission. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Valenzuela.
Mr. Mayor, the Public Works Department has assessed the request for awarding one provided solid waste for the City of South Fulton. As discussed before, the recommendation came after a due diligence analysis of proposals submitted to the city. And this recommendation includes the following items. Weekly garbage collection, monthly bulk item services up to three yards. And other items will include additional cars, yard debris removal. The monthly cost to residents, it is at $19.43. That includes again, weekly garbage collection, monthly bulk item services. A plan of action for us to start with this process. It is forecasted to begin on, on June of this year. And that is, in summary, what this recommendation is for.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Waste Pro.
Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would ask people to get in the queue. I have several questions. I want to be clear, Mr. Valenzuela, you and I have already had a conversation about all of these questions, so there will be no new questions today. However, these are questions from constituents who do not get to come to all of our meetings at City Hall. So I would just like for you to issue these answers on the record for the constituents. There is conversation about billing through the Tax Commissioner's office. He will have some fee for that billing, should we choose to go that direction. Has the Tax Commissioner's fee been factored into this $19.41?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, that's not germane to what's on the floor. We're approving the contract.
All right, my next question is, what are the penalties for non-compliance or poor performance?
Mayor, that's not germane to this contract. That's in the ordinance.
Is, are penalties listed in this contract?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What are those penalties?
If, if a home is missed, it is $25 if they do not resolve the issue within 48 hours. After, I believe it's 10 homes, then it goes up to $50 per household fine.
That's for the contractor, right? Not the homeowner?
Not the homeowner. Yes, that's in the contract with the contractor.
Thank you.
All right. If, if the homes, if the homes are missed or someone has service, is there, will there be reimbursement for the citizens? And perhaps that's not in the contract. Perhaps that's an issue for the ordinance?
That is not in the contract.
Okay. Who runs the call center?
The vendor would run the call center.
All right. How often will we get reports from that call center?
We will have continuous access to their, their processes, and we'll be able to run a report at any time that we are requested to provide one.
There was conversation about adding additional recycling centers, perhaps one per district for, for people who did wish to recycle and bring their recycling. Has there been any conversation about that?
With regards to recycling, right now, residents of the City of South Fulton can drop off anything that's recycled to the Merck Miles location. And going forward, we're planning on expanding and making better services for recycle.
Thank you. The management of Merck Miles is not in this contract? Is handled by someone separately?
Yes, sir, at this point.
Okay, and Waste Pro will not be taking over the running of Merck Miles?
We have not considered, or we have, as part of this contract, we have not made a decision of recommendation yet, but Merck Miles will be assessed right after this contract.
All right. This, this one has been of particular consequence to, to, to many residents. The contract does not, the, the contract, I'm sorry, let me, let me, let me say this. We're, we're supposed to have residential service. Every resident is supposed to have this service. That is not handled in the. That is not handled in the contract. That is handled in the sanitation ordinance?
As part of the forecast on the contract, it's about to provide services to up to forty thousand households. So that would be part of the contract. The six point nine four million dollars forecast is based on the households that this contract will be servicing.
Okay. I didn't understand that answer, so I'm going to ask the question differently. Where does it stipulate that every resident of the city of South Fulton must have this service?
Right after the approval of this contract, we're coming back with the EU for approval of an amendment of the ordinance, of the solid waste ordinance, where it will be mandated at that point.
Okay, so next, that will be next, next month that we will vote on this requirement?
Yes, sir.
All right. I've, I've sent you these questions about private versus public streets. So I hope that when you come back next month, you'll be able to let us know a definitive answer. You'll give it to our city attorneys about that and we'll figure out which neighborhoods have private streets and might be exempt from this service. All right, those are my questions. Councilman Sebastian is left. We'll come back to him. Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me. Mr. Valensuela, what's the length of this contract?
We have one year and three years' option to renew.
Four to, four total years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did the city, anybody, did y'all come up with a plan? Because y'all know that I would love to have sanitation in-house, as we should be the only provider. But I digress. Is there a plan to roll that in-house after this contract ends? Or during this contract?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure, but as you know, everything is done based on fiscal impacts. We will definitely, we'll recommend what's the best for the city and base what is going on in the meter area.
So a year from now, we should have the metrics on the numbers of the data to see if it's feasible to bring it in-house?
Sure.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, Councilwoman Pritchett.
My question relates to, in the contract, can I refer to the specific point in the contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So in five point two and five point three, it talks about the failure to collect material from a service unit within forty-eight hours. And then it talks about per occurrence and the, the amounts that seem to be a fine or something to that effect to the service provider. Is that a fine that is, that goes against them? Or, or does that fine amount somehow translate into like a refundable amount or a credit to the, the citizen user? If that makes sense?
It would be against the contractor.
So when the contractor, say, doesn't pick up, doesn't pick up for that week or within forty-eight hours, they will get fined, but the person, the, the citizen user doesn't receive any kind, doesn't have any kind of adjustment or reflection on their bill?
Please, ma'am.
We will make sure that we make some adjustments and proper corrections to ensure that our residents get some kind of compensation if they, if they miss services.
Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I keep hearing, we have a portal that we put up for sanitation. And I keep hearing, you know, statements about this people losing their homes to sanitation and that sort of stuff. Is there something like that in place where we'll take people's homes if they don't pay their sanitation bill?
I'm sorry. I, I would love to have this conversation, Councilman Sebastian, but it's not germane to the contract. We will be able to talk about that next month when we approve the sanitation ordinance.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure nothing is in the contract. And do I still have the floor?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm calling for the question now.
I have one more question, but go ahead. And, and Dr. Rawl was in the queue as well, but the question has been called. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote for the previous question.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
The question has been called. The main motion is on the floor.
All right. I'm going to call for the vote.
Roll call vote on the main motion. Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Do you mind if you ask, I would like to ask the city attorney to send that ordinance back through the legislative process? Because we pulled it and we, it's been out for a while. So we probably need to send it right back through the process so everybody can get the email. So do you mind directing the city attorney?
You've done it. Did you hear that, Mr. City Attorney?
If I'm not mistaken, did we send the solid waste orders back to the legislative process?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'm just going to, to make a note here. While it is within Rawl's rules for anyone to call for the question, call for the previous question and end discussion, I would just ask for my colleagues, before doing so, after you've got your questions answered, if we could check the queue and look around the room to make sure that all of the other of your colleagues have had a chance to speak and ask their questions. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yes, sir. We're on item seventeen.
And I'm, and I'm actually, I'm sorry, pause. I'm sorry, one moment. We usually have an intermission in this agenda. I just want to do a quick temperature check with my colleagues. Would you all like to proceed? Would you like to take an intermission? We're about halfway through the agenda now.
Like fifteen minutes.
If we got things that's going to cause discussion, we might want to do an intermission. But if we got things where, I don't see, I don't see anything, I mean, that's just mild. I don't see anything.
Okay. Well, you all good down there? Well, I'll tell you what, we'll keep going and, and you, someone stop me around seven o'clock if we, if, if we need to, to take a break. We can. All right, go ahead. Sound that next item, sir.
Yes, sir. We're on item seventeen. Request council approval of a revised citywide fee schedule to be effective March sixth, twenty twenty-three. This is presented by Finance and CDRA.
Mr. Hull. This is your, this is your show. We're sending you out with a bang, sir.
My colleagues are making me work these final days. Mr. Mayor, members of Council Derek Hull, reporting on behalf of the Finance Department and CDRA. The presentation that we provided you earlier, or late last year, considered a number of factors. And so all of the directors took it upon themselves to talk with the staff and assess where the current fees were. Overall, I will tell you that while we are making, collectively as a city, we're making recommendations. Typically, none of the fees will exceed six percent above what the fees were previously. As a part of our task in doing so, we compared our current fees to the municipalities that touch us. Obviously, East Point, College Park, Fairburn, but then also some communities up north and the city of Atlanta, and then a couple of counties, Fulton and DeKalb. And so what you have before you are recommendations for some of the various applications and activities related to the fee increase that we are proposing. And my fellow directors are here. If there are any specific questions related to the proposed fee increases.
Is there anyone in the queue?
The city manager has a comment.
Battle City Manager.
I just wanted to add that we wanted to do an effective date of March the sixth so that we will have an opportunity to properly give the public notice of the fee changes.
Thank you so much for that. I, I did have a couple of questions.
March first.
March sixth.
March sixth. Okay.
Impact fees-
Should be the first Monday of March.
Impact fees are included in this fee schedule. Could you just talk about those?
The impact fees are not included in the schedule, so we're probably going to have to later on do an amendment. And the reason why they're not included is because we're going to have to do a full-on study. Thank you. Whoever said that. Study before. But we have been in contact with Finance and Purchasing. We've sent over some draft language to start the RFP. We have not started the RFP process yet. We will be getting that underway shortly.
Okay. Are park fees in this schedule?
Yes. My colleague, Tinnard.
Turner.
Turner, thank you, actually made sure that before we transmitted this to the city clerk, he was able to review the proposed fees and made some recommendations to increase some areas within park and recreations.
If you give me just one, one second. Right, the agenda packet is a thousand pages, so I might have missed something in those thousand pages. I'll just, I'll just ask the question, because maybe other people who study the agenda packet more than me already automatically know the answer. Are there, is there a fee differential for, is there, I know that we've had a fee differential for, for residents versus non-residents. Is there any fee scale for residents in the parks fees for individuals that have multiple children in a program? If I, if I have to, if I have to buy helmets or pay for athletic fees and I've got four sons, do I have to pay the same price for all four fees?
Yes, sir. We, we do account for multi-family children. Like if you have two or three children, we do account for that. And most of those fees, I just want to keep in mind, most of those fees are fees that were current. Prior to this role, I was here and I was a part of that fee schedule as well. So I took a look at that and I took a look at the surrounding counties, Cobb, Atlanta, and also looked at, looked at just, just the city of South Fulton, just to make sure that the fees were, were right. So yes, sir, it does. We always accounted for multi-children's discounts. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And then lastly, while you're here, the, the fees for seniors.
Sure.
Are using senior, like I know the seniors that use this facility here, South West Arts Center, pay nothing.
Sure, sure.
And there was conversation that seniors would pay nothing to use our facilities across the city.
Sure. Now, I continue that as well. It was, it was already here and I, you know, based on, again, based on my research, it was, that's the standard practice. Yes, sir.
So seniors over the age of sixty-five will pay no park fees anywhere in the city?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I hope you heard that, Ms. Head. I hope you're watching. Thank you.
Anything? Any other questions? And based on my research, it was, that's the standard practice. Yes, sir.
So seniors over the age of sixty-five will pay no park fees anywhere in the city?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. Please sound the next item.
Next item is request council approval for a resolution adopting the Community Development Services twenty twenty-three calendars and locations for rezonings, modifications and variances for the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton, Georgia to comply with Georgia Open Meetings Act and for other purposes, CDRA.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the Community Development Service Departments twenty twenty-three calendar and locations for rezonings, modifications and variances for the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton, Georgia to comply with Georgia Open Meetings Act for and for all other purposes.
Second amendment.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Dr. Rawl.
I have questions about the calendar. In the past, our calendar made it easy to kind of follow a case from community zoning information to planning commission to city council. When I looked at this calendar, it wasn't apparent to me how that would flow. Is there some reason we laid it out different?
Technically, there isn't. The only thing that's mandated related to the dates are the planning commission meetings and for zonings, rezonings, modifications, and then variances that are concurrent. The CZIM, we typically try to schedule before, but in some cases, we might actually have it earlier or later. And we didn't want to have a specific date. So we take those on a case-by-case basis. But the dates that we have to be concerned with are the actual scheduled dates for the actual meetings, planning commission meetings.
Okay. I don't know. I get calls about the zoning cases more than anything else. And I just, I just wanted to be clear. So even though that may be the legal standard, I do think we should lay it out to help people kind of stay in track because, God, it's not easy with all the different steps in the process, so.
It is not. And part of the challenge is, when we have the calendar, and you will find probably next month and in March, there will be individuals who are thinking that their cases are going to go forward, but there still is some due diligence that needs to occur. So even if, even with us having it every month, we're not necessarily going to schedule every case because oftentimes, as you see in your planning commission, your city council packets, many of the cases don't have responses from departments. So we're trying to afford a little bit more time for the departments to provide a little bit more feedback. So even with the calendar, we might not have a case scheduled as it looks like it will appear for the next month.
Yeah, City Manager, you know, and I'm just saying this because I know you've been going, please look at this because I, I think we are accustomed that deferrals happen. They happen pretty regularly. It's just like I said, I just think it'd be hard for the citizens to, it's hard enough for us to follow, let alone the citizens. So if we can figure out a way to present that outward in a way that makes, makes sense, I would appreciate that.
All right, I just have a request of council. This calendar, the, the zoning meetings are still starting at six P.M.? I'm, I'm struggling to remember a time as mayor where we actually began our zoning meeting on time because our work sessions usually run long. And that was before we began, we began requiring all of this additional reporting from the city manager, the Public Works Report. I can't remember all of the things that we, that we ask you to include in these reports now. But we asked for multiple reports from the city manager. There is a request for two items from council and two items from the mayor's office. It is impossible to do that in two hours. I would implore this council to consider starting our zoning meetings at seven P.M. Is there any appetite for that amongst council?
Can we split the difference to six thirty?
Okay.
Six thirty for the, for the meeting. Because he's right, we do go over it every time.
I just, I mean, you know, if we, if we say we're going to start, if we say we're going to start at six, we should start at six. If we are going to start at six thirty, we should start at six thirty. But, but keeping in mind everything that we're asking to report on, if we are going to keep to this time, we will not be able to entertain two items from council and two items from the mayor for every work session. There is just no time for that. So we'll be out of compliance with the ordinance that was written about the work session.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Willis.
Well, I, I think-
Well, I, I think one thing that will be helpful, if you stop putting times on the agenda. We're not out of compliance because we're starting late. We're not out of compliance. I don't know any government that has several meetings and one that starts on time. You know, so I think we need to stop boxing ourselves into a certain time. Government takes time. It takes, at times, we're gonna have topics on agendas that's gonna require more discussion. And I, I really do think that will help us expedite is if we start reading the information that is sent to us ahead of time, asking questions to limit, you know, discussions that are unnecessary. I know I read through the agenda and sent a lot of questions out over the weekend to limit discussions specifically for that purpose. And so if we do what we're supposed to do and do study the agenda, that's our jobs. That's what people elected us to do and try to get us some of these questions out, we can expedite. But to say that we're not gonna be able to do something that we have voted and legislated, you're not gonna be able to stop us from doing something that we voted to do. That's, I mean, it's an ordinance, it's a law.
I, I hear you, Councilwoman Willis. I'm not trying to stop you. I do agree that governments take time and discussions take time, which is why I'm asking for this additional hour for discussions in our work session. I think it is also important to note that the discussions that we have are not just here, are not just for ourselves. This isn't just a meeting of council and staff. It is a meeting of our citizens and stakeholders. And many times when we ask questions and we're entertaining discussions, it is not only for our own edification, but for the edification and education of our public. Many of the questions that I ask are questions that the public has asked. They may have even called and no one answered the phone. They may have even sent in an email. But I agree with you, the meetings do take time. I am not saying that I'm going to stop you from putting items on the agenda or that I'm gonna stop you from having conversations. I'm just going, I'm just saying that if we continue this way, we're going to continue, we're going to keep having our zoning meetings late. And the people, the developers and the folks that come for those hearings will just grow accustomed to the fact that though we say six o'clock on the agenda, we don't normally start at six o'clock. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Gums.
Okay, I'll go on the queue.
Oh, I was about to call a previous question.
Second.
Okay, the previous question has been called. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to call the previous question. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
The question has been called. Main motion is on the floor.
All right. Please call the vote on the main motion.
Roll call on the main motion. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item nineteen, request city council approval of a contract with Clark Patterson Lee doing business to CPL for interim management of the Community Development, Planning and Zoning Department in the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars per month to be funded out of the CDRA professional services.
I'll entertain a motion.
I have a few questions, Mayor. I'll go on the queue if you would like.
Dr. Rowell?
Yes, for this particular item.
Call for the motion, sir.
Oh, I'll make a motion for discussion purpose.
Oh, no, you, you don't have to. We can discuss.
Okay. So my question pertains to the staffing. This is not a small amount of money. And I wanna understand what that, how that relates to our current staffing, because we do have engineers, we do have planning staff. And so I was thinking we were just dealing with a couple positions, but the, the contract has a, a long list of employees included.
Mr. Toms is gonna address that for me.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Rowell. It is for all services to include the planning and zoning. So the cost is to include the work volume, not necessarily bodies of people.
Do you have any information on the volume? Because I can tell by the CZIMs and other, things are slowing. So do you have some information on the volume?
Yes, ma'am. So with the last go-around, just for the planning and zoning, the, the three sections are permitting, engineering and, and land development and planning and zoning. Just in planning and zoning, the last go-around, they had three full-time bodies.
Right, but that proposal has more than three full-time bodies. It has engineer, people, we have employees who are in the seats. And I, and I wanna be clear, because of course, if I was employee and I'd seen that, I would, I would wanna understand what that meant for me.
Also, the expectation is that Ms. Kiefer and the team would continue the projects that are currently going on right now in CDRA. For example, we mentioned the impact study. Her firm would assist with that. I know that several of you have some key projects in your department. She will be assisting with that. It will be herself, I believe, and maybe one and a half other persons.
That's designated, but depending on the projects, they'll pull in different people. So it's to keep the workload going.
Follow-up question. So is this billed up to or is this a fixed amount? Because I would be more open to an up-to amount. And, and I also don't want us to be in this long term.
It's, it's a month-to-month agreement, and that is a fixed amount. And anything outside the scope, there's, there's fees if you bring in special engineers or.
And then, as you mentioned, you know, we hope that we can get that position filled as quickly as possible. For those in the public that don't know, Mr. Hull, his last day will be February the third, and we do appreciate all the great work he has done for us. Yes, we can, we can clap. But again, we, you know, hope that we can get the position filled. We expect that it could take, you know, at least six months, but our goal is to probably try to get it posted and put it as wide of a, cast it out, as wide of a net as we can in order to get the best qualified candidate to run the department for us.
Okay, then I make a motion that we approve the contract with Clark Patterson Lee for interim management of CDRA in amount of thirty-two thousand per month, not to exceed six months.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We have further discussion. Councilman Sebastian.
Madam City Manager, I just wanna be very clear. What is gonna be the role for this contract? Is it, do you foresee that it's going to replace all of the functions that Mr. Hull has been doing right now? Or are there other things that we're gonna have to come back and address until we get the full-time person in place? Because it's, I know it says planning and zoning here, but it also says CDRA. So I just wanna be, I just wanna be clear.
Yeah, so essentially, you know, my expectation is that Ms. Rebecca Kiefer, who served as the interim prior to Mr. Hull coming on with us in May, he came with us in May of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, pardon me, I can't talk. She served in that role as the interim, I believe, for at least seven months for us. So she would essentially run the department, the positions and the supervisors in that department would report to her. We are also trying to do our very best. We've, we've made an offer for a city engineer, and I will be announcing that to you guys very soon. But, you know, essentially, again, she would just run the department for us along with the other team that will be coming from Clark Patterson Lee to assist us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I, I just wanna ask a quick follow-up question, Madam City Manager, because we, we, we put a six-month time limit on this. But I know that in our consent agenda, we are hiring through an executive search firm, a second city manager and an internal auditor. And now we are adding this interim finance director. In your professional opinion.
Wait, you said interim finance director?
The, I'm sorry, what is?
Oh, you mean the internal auditor?
No, no.
CDRA.
CDRA.
Oh, okay, all right.
Getting my answers mixed up. In your professional opinion, is six months enough time to make that hire?
I mean, you know, we're in the month of, almost in the month of February. I think six months would be sufficient. And if for some reason we don't make that six-month timeframe, I will just have to come back to the council to ask for an extension. But we will do our very best to try to see if we can get that position filled sooner than later.
Okay. Councilwoman Willis.
I'm just going to be transparent and tell you that I am very concerned. First of all, I wanna thank Mr. Hull for his, his very, his, his great service, but short-stay, because he hasn't even been here a year. And, but he has made a true impact, and he has his hands in a lot of projects. And I am very concerned about just, if his last day is the third, when is this person supposed to start?
You guys sign the contract, I'm sorry, when you guys approve the contract, I can hopefully get it signed, you know, later than the end of this week. So hopefully, we can get around, maybe by tomorrow.
I just would hope that you would consider, you know, maybe keep him, Mr. Hull, if he's willing to do some consulting, until he can get, until she can get up to speed with a lot of the projects that we have on. I already have a lot of, you know, things that need immediate attention and responses. And I just, I'm very concerned. And I am not being condescending to Ms. Rebecca Kiefer, because she's been here before. But when it comes to building permits, when it comes to the, the studies that we have on the, on the table that Mr. Hull was helping us with, some of the, some of the zoning issues he was helping us with, I'm going on record to say I am very concerned. We are already getting residents complaining about certain matters. So without going too much into personnel issues, I am very concerned to that his last day is on a, on a third. And I just don't think that's going to allow enough time for certain projects to be transitioned. And I just wish that certain specific projects that he's working on, that we haven't, the council members hasn't even been met with, you know, about the specific projects in our districts that he's working on. And so how's that gonna happen between now and the third before he walks out the door?
Well, he has offered to assist us with a transition plan. And I have all the faith in Ms. Kiefer. I mean, she's a certified planner, so I think that she has the skills and the ability to take on whatever projects that have been started or expected to be started. I, I just have faith in her and her team. And I think, you know, if all of us jump right in, we can get it done.
And I am not saying I don't have faith in Ms. Kiefer. Ms. Kiefer, I think, is very qualified and she did a good job. But we have some complicated matters that have been initiated and started since, since Mr. Hull has been here. I'm going on record to say I'm very concerned that he is leaving on the third and council members haven't been met with. And you, as the city manager, has been copying all of these emails. So you know we're dealing with some very complicated matters.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam City Jones, Madam, Madam City Jones, can we find the money? I'm gonna speak frankly and quite specifically, to keep Mr. Hull at least through the timeframe of the projects that we have going on. I have zero faith in the consultants. I understand where she comes from a background. But Mr. Hull has come in and made an impact throughout the whole city. And I mean, the entire city and not the specific areas. And I think that the things that, from the community standpoint, would like to keep those going, I just don't think that's gonna happen if we give this contract to the contractors. Because as I stated, the other services are going to cost. And the things that the community has been asking for, bringing folks to the table, Mr. Hull has delivered. And so I just would like to see if we can find the money to, I specifically want the project and him to work on this project that he would continue out what we have going on. So thank you very much.
Is that a substitute motion?
I'm, 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 I'm gonna jump in real, real quick. There's been discussions about humanity tonight. I am not sure that we should be negotiating an extension of someone's employment or a contract for their transition in a public council meeting. Perhaps, at these, the points are very well noted. I think they're very good. And I, perhaps people could meet in dyads with the city managers to discuss this further. Would, would you be amenable to that?
I mean, I, I will take recommendations under consideration, but, you know, this council has charged me through the charter with the responsibility of managing the day-to-day operations of the city. So I would hope that whatever decision I make, I can have your support.
Absolutely. We love you, Derek Cole. We don't want you to leave. We'll have more conversation about it at another time. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I just wanted to tell us, this is one of the personal things that as a council, we need to stay away from and leave to the city manager. The item that's on the table is a contract for us to approve, not anything else. So I would just implore us to stick to what's on the table. Thank you.
And with that, we return to the motion on the floor to approve with seconded, correct, Mr. Clerk?
It's correct.
All right, well, let's call for the vote.
It's a motion by Councilmember Rowell, seconded by Councilmember Gums, within condition that this contract not exceed six months. Roll call, Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
No.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Pritchett.
No.
That motion fails.
All right, Mayor, can we discuss further in executive session on the personnel? Thank you.
You can, whatever you wanna discuss. Well, not whenever, but that sounds like an HR matter. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty, request council approval of a pipeline crisis crossing license agreement with OmniTrax Railroad to repair two damaged seventy-two-foot stormwater drain pipes located at sixty-two oh five Boat Rock Boulevard. Estimated cost of the repair of the stormwater drain pipes is two thousand, two thousand twelve, five hundred dollars to be funded out of the stormwater funding line, Public Works.
Mr. Valens Wheeler, you have some.
We approve the pipe.
I'm just gonna have Mr. Valens Wheeler come up before I entertain a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Valens Wheeler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the item presented to you is to allow the OmniTrax make the repairs at the Boat Rock, crossing the railroad, going towards the Shaw, Shawwich River. Unfortunately, it's one of the items that the City of South Fulton has inherited. And due to numerous conversations and recommendations with, within Public Works and our legal department, it is our recommendation that we proceed with the proper repairs with OmniTrax through license agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the pipeline crossing license agreement with OmniTrax Railroad to repair two damaged seventy-two-feet stormwater drain pipes located at sixty-two oh five Boat Rock Boulevard. The estimated cost of the repair in the stormwater drain, drain pipes is estimated at two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to be funded for my stormwater funding line.
It's been properly moved and seconded, it sounds like. Mr. Clerk, please, I'm sorry, is there a discussion, Councilman Sebastian? Okay, that's from something previously. Alright, uh, Mr. Clerk, seeing no discussion, please call the vote.
It's roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously?
Alright, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
On item twenty-one, request council approval to award I T B twenty-two dash one zero four sidewalk improvements on Dan Fourth Road to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, meeting the specifications. The bidder is C M C Incorporated, located in Sawony, Georgia, in the amount of one million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-four cents to be funded from the T Sploso account.
Mr. Valens Willis?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, it's our recommendation to proceed with the, uh, award of the, uh, most responsible lowest bidder for the Dan Fourth Road sidewalks that will, uh, provide, uh, extension of the current sidewalks from the City of Valenta to K S K Road.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the council approve to award I T B, uh, twenty-two dash one oh four for sidewalk improvements on Dan Fourth Road to the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the specification, C M C located in Sawony, Georgia, an amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, which includes a ten percent contingency amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-four cents to be funded from T Sploso.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh, Mr. Clerk, see, is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, oh, Councilman Reeves? Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Mr. Valens Willis, how are you doing, sir?
I'm doing good, sir, it's my pleasure to be here.
Absolutely. Um, according to these sidewalks, would this include, when they say approved man, would this include new curb and gutter as well?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, the actual, uh, cross-section of the sidewalks includes, uh, curb and gutter, two feet, uh, two, uh, foot stamped concrete plus, uh, five-foot sidewalks.
Okay. And then one last little question.
Plus, uh, you know, any sidewalks that we do, it provides all the, uh, hydraulics, um, that has to do with stone, with the stormwater.
Correct, good deal. Thank you so much. And are we still on track with the right-of-way acquisition completion for the second phase of Highway two seventy-nine?
We're doing everything we can, and that's our, uh, next priority project that we want to let for the City of South Fulton.
The next, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Call for the previous question.
Alright, doing everything we can doesn't inspire a lot of confidence, but we have the previous question, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call, uh, the vote.
It's a motion to call the previous question, that moved and seconded, uh, roll call, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That, uh, the motion to call the question is approved six to one. The main motion is on the floor.
Alright, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is item twenty-three, request council approval to purchase five Kia Sportage hybrid vehicles from Jim Shorkey Auto Group for the Fire Department inspectors in the Community Risk Reduction Division in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, sixty-three dollars to be funded out of the capital improvement plan budget.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Willis?
I have a question, if you don't mind, about this item.
Okay, do we want to let the chief present first, and then you direct your questions after that?
Oh, I didn't know he was presenting, because we have asked him a lot of questions about this, so, I mean.
Go ahead, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, City Manager. Uh, yes, uh, this item, uh, is to purchase five Kias. It was in our strategic plan to, uh, increase our community risk reduction by five people, which we're in this budget. We've hired three, we've extended an offer to the fourth, and we're continuing to look for the fifth. Uh, these vehicles will be their means to get around and do inspections. Uh, so we bring the city into, uh, compliance with Title twenty-five. Uh, this is on the state contract.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you, I, I'll go ahead and make the motion, um, and I want to, uh, then ask my question, um, if you don't mind. I, uh, I approve, I want to move that we approve five Kia Sportage hybrid vehicles, uh, specifically, um, for the use of, uh, community risk inspectors, uh, and educators, and only fire personnel.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? I see Councilwoman Linda Pritchett in the queue.
Yes. Um, my question is, if anyone has considered, uh, purchasing from, um, I guess the G M A fleet, um, I might be saying this wrong, but, um, I, I believe that in our, uh, G M A training, they talked about purchasing vehicles through a fleet program where the vehicles, um, would be at significantly lower cost. Um, I don't know, uh, is that question for?
It's for Chief Jones, I think this is that, that contract, but go ahead, Chief Jones. Yes, sorry, Councilwoman, I can't really see it. Um, but yes, uh, that's what we do, uh, we use the G M A, uh, purchasing. Uh, we go through all of our apparatus, whether it's, uh, large or small. Uh, we go through the state contract, so we get the best price for our, our citizens. Uh, and then we use G M A financing, which gives us the lowest, uh, interest rates and everything. Uh, these are actually in our budget, so we're actually paying for these, uh, with cash. So we will not be financing.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are our first hybrid vehicles that we're purchasing?
It is not.
Okay.
We've purchased some before from, in the Fire Department.
Awesome. Well, thank you, we're making strides in the right direction, we're gonna get some electric vehicles on that state contract and in our city soon. Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound, I'm sorry, please call the vote.
Yes, who, who, who's the second on that, this one in there? Uh, Mr., okay, thank you.
Second.
Yeah, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Reeves, uh, seconded. Uh, this is roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously?
Um, may, um, we just need to make sure that it's amended, because, um, I did add some language to the item that, I just want to make sure the clerk had the amended, uh, and the specifications I made in my motion.
I have it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty-four, this is the first read of an ordinance to amend Title sixteen alcoholic beverages of the City of South Fulton, quote, ordinances, to add section sixteen dash two zero three point two related to requirements for public safety plans. This is sponsored by Councilmember Ral.
Um, this is the first read, but, um, one thing I would ask the attorney to amend, that, that cameras be included as a requirement, and this not option, but the remainder, the language, before it comes back for a second read. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Willis.
So, as it relates to the alcohol license, I know Councilmember, um, Ral is asking for cameras, but, uh, isn't it true, um, Chief Manus, we have a gas station ordinance that requires security and, and cameras? Um, so is this for all alcohol establishments?
It's, it's my understanding that this is for all alcohol establishments, right?
Right. Okay. So this is inclusive of all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, Councilman Reeves.
I ask also to, uh, Dr. Ral for a friendly amendment here, and, uh, hopefully, um, Ms. Slayton, this can opine is, that this is for, well, let me ask you a question, Dr. Ral, is this for the, um, alcohol ordinance? And as it pertains to the extension of the hours?
No, it doesn't address that, it just deals with, um, locations that sell alcohol, which could include retail establishments as well as, uh, you know, clubs and everything, that we have a public safety plan. We've, in a number of occasions, asked that as a requirement, that they bring it back. This will be required if you're selling alcohol, that you have a public safety plan in place.
Right, absolutely, thank you. So, um, Madam Jones, we do have an excise tax, also known, AKA, a port tax, uh, for the, um, establishments. And that fund goes to the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, can we earmark those funds, because for the public safety and safety improvements around those areas, to go towards police, pub, police, public safety?
Point of order, Mayor, this is not a rain.
I mean, I'm just saying, I get, this is just the first read, and I'm just gonna ask that those, that those funds be allocated for there. So they're required to pay for two officers, instead of them paying for it, we can, uh, supply those as part of public safety.
Your, your point of order is noted, Councilwoman Willis, uh, Councilman Reeves, you always have very excellent ideas. I think that, uh, you could get with Dr. Ral and add that language into this ordinance or present that as a separate, uh, ordinance or resolution, but, um, I mean, we are in discussion, but I, you know, I think tho- I think those are the two options.
Thank you, thank you for the options, uh, then.
Alright, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is under City Council and City Administration, item twenty-five, request council consideration of an override of the mayor's veto of a resolution approving the city manager's emergency procurement of probation supervision and rehab services.
I'd like to.
I'll entertain a motion, go ahead, Doc, and Councilman Gums.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the, wait a minute, I'm gonna make sure, number twenty-five. Um, I want to approve the request for council's consideration of an override of the mayor's veto of a resolution approving the city manager's emergency procurement of probation supervision and rehab services. I also would like to, uh, request the council's approval of an emergency ordinance declaring a state of an emergency for the City of South Fulton, and then also to request approval for a resolution fixing and publishing qualifying fees for offices subject to election in the year twenty twenty-three and for all other purposes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, I have questions about whether it is proper to combine a veto override with a new ordinance and a resolution, Mr. City Attorney.
To me, as long as the record is clear as to what you're voting on and the public knows, um, that would just fall within the line of Roberts or the.
Alright, uh, our attorney has opined that it is, that is proper. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a motion to approve items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven collectively. Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Yes, no, yes.
Your first answer was yes? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
The motion, those items were approved unanimously.
Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, please sound the next item.
Next item is item twenty-eight, request council approval for the city manager to secure proper L E D video equipment, curtains, cables, and stage items for the Wolf Creek Amphitheater in order to hold live performances with a cost not to exceed two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The funding will come from F Y twenty-three Wolf Creek budget.
I'd like.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to request council's approval for the city manager to secure the proper L E D video equipment, curtains, cables, and other stage items for the Wolf Creek Amphitheater in order to hold live performances with a cost not to exceed two hundred and sixty thousand. And the funding will come from F Y twenty-three Wolf Creek budget.
Second.
The funding will come from F Y twenty-three Wolf Creek budget.
Second.
Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please, uh, call the vote.
It's roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item was approved six to one.
Alright, uh, I believe the final item was, uh, item number seven that was removed from the consent agenda, is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct, that is item number seven from the consent agenda. Request approval of a resolution appointing District Six Councilmember Natasha Williams as Mayor Pro Tim for, this is sponsored by Councilmember Sebastian, Ral, Gums, and Willis. This item was removed from the consent agenda by Councilmember Sebastian.
Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, the outgoing Mayor Pro Tim requested to be added as a sponsor, so if we can let the record reflects that, unless he changes mind, but he did tell me that a couple days ago. Thank you, Councilmember Reeves. Um, the other thing I, I wanted to just mention quickly, this, um, nomination, which I am happy to make, is consistent with what we decided last year in terms of giving the Mayor Pro Tim, um, by some seniority. And so, um, we did agree a year ago that we are gonna do it this way, right? Um, so, we are hopefully being consistent with what we did in twenty twenty-two. Alright, so, I just wanted to mention that, and with that, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, um, make a motion to approve Councilmember Williams as Mayor Pro Tim for twenty twenty-three.
Second. Alright, it's been properly moved and seconded, I do have a point of, uh, order, Mr. City Attorney. Only four names are allowed on a resolution, is that correct?
As a resolution, I have to, um, review it, but I, there is a policy as to about the amount of sponsors that you can have. Give me one minute.
I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't care one way or another, but if you just look into it, because I know that that has come up previously. Uh, Councilman Reeves?
Alright, I just want to thank my colleagues and, uh, and this year in the constituents for the opportunity to serve as Mayor Pro Tim in twenty twenty-two. And, um, it was year five, and I do represent District Five, so, you know, um, very important and alongside of, uh, to serve as, um, this Mayor Pro Tim, and I hope that I did the constituency well, uh, in that role. I really don't like to say it, because when you say Mayor Pro Tim, people just stop hearing Pro Tim and think you're the mayor, says, oh, this is the mayor. But however, it's, um, it's a great opportunity to have experience in chairing meetings and things of that nature, so, um, and I do want to recognize the incoming Mayor Pro Tim, as I will rest assured to the constituency, they are certainly in good hands, and so, I'm glad that she shares next door with me as well, so I'll be calling you now. And, uh, thank you all, thank you, that's all.
Alright, thank you, Councilwoman Willis.
I just want to go on the record to say that, um, we did not, I know the mayor did bring forth that reg, that legislation to, we change Mayor Pro Tims every year, um, and I know the mayor did put forth legislation that we go by, um, district order, but we actually did not agree to do that. And so, um, whoever we vote on as Mayor Pro Tim has to gain the trust and, um, the confidence of their colleagues. And so, um, if next year, we, if we decide we want Councilmember Williams to be Mayor Pro Tim again, we could do that. Am I correct, Mr., but I'm not saying we're gonna do that, it's been working out where we have been going down and, and the people in, in, um, districts have been, um, gaining, uh, trust and confidence, but am I correct? Uh, I think I sent you s- language. But am I correct, I think I sent you language from the charter, Attorney Hyman. Are we required or mandated to go in line voting on Mayor Pro Tim per district every year?
No, and I do remember there being some discussion initially posed by the mayor in that it didn't have to be a charter amendment, and so it was decided it would be done by resolution, by resolution. And according to our charter at 3.29, it says that the term of the Mayor Pro Tim should be one year. And it goes, no council members should serve more than two or more consecutive terms. So as long as you don't go beyond the two consecutive, it can't be the same person presented to the charter.
I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that Councilmember Williams did garner the trust and the confidence of her colleagues to earn the title for 12 months, Mayor Pro Tim.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you made certain requests of this council with regards to the Mayor Pro Tim position. And I think we honored that in '22, we didn't vote that way, but that was part of our consideration. And again, this year, and thanking Councilmember Willis for coming back around to the argument that I stood alone in 2022 to make, that the Mayor Pro Tim should not be scheduled, but that we should make a vote every January. Because just like the mayor is elected across this entire city, the Mayor Pro Tim who would stand in for our mayor need to be selected by the entire city that's represented by this council. That was my argument in 2022, and I still feel the same way today, right? However, I think the person who we have nominated this year is well-deserving of that role. So again, I stand in full support, and I was happy to sponsor, at least lead, the resolution to make her the Mayor Pro Tim. Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Rawl. Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
No.
That item was approved six to one.
All right, thank you, and congratulations, Mayor Pro Tim Williams. We have reached the end of our agenda, an hour ahead of schedule. Well done, council. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session or adjourn. Hopefully, whatever motion is made will come with a 15-minute intermission.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to adjourn, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves. Mayor Pro Tim Williams. Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:18 PM. That motion was approved six to one.
Thank you all so much for coming. Feel free to hang out in the lobby for a while. Some of us will be out to mingle with you. You can also enjoy the art exhibit in our gallery, South Fulton Forever.